Okay, good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School District Board of Directors meeting for October 16th of 2013. First on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and it's going to be presented by Eagle Scout, David Hogenowski.
Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. All right, I'd actually like to introduce David's. David is here with his mom. I'd like to introduce her. This is Hogenowski. And I do believe your Eagle Scout leader is here. And your name, sir?
Josh Carvall. I'm one of the, Josh Carvall. I'm one of the Assistant Scout Masters with Troop 353.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and you have a project you'd like to present to us?
Yeah. So, first, I'm David Hogenowski. I'm from Boy Scout Troop 353 in Bennington, Vermont. I am a resident of Powell, lived here all my life. I'm an alumni of this school. I've been in these very halls. And then, so, once I got to this stage of, in my scouting career, I'm a Life Scout now, one step below Eagle. I always knew that I wanted to do something, my Eagle Scout project in Powell or at the school. And then through talking with Mr. Phillips, I got some good ideas. And so, with Mr. Phillips' advice, I would like to build a pair of soccer goals out behind the school in a big field just adjacent to that larger playground where the, many of the older students have their recess and things like that. To get into the, well, this project's important to me because when I was younger, up until ninth grade, I played soccer with the Bennington U Soccer League. I played freshman soccer at the high school. And then I remember at recess playing soccer out on that field when it was nice in the springtime. And so, this project has a special meaning to me because it's something that I still enjoy and love, soccer. And it's got a special meaning to me that is my elementary school. It's given me so much. I'd like to give something back. And then, to get into the more nitty-gritty of it, they would be aluminum soccer goals so that they would be durable enough to stand up to the weather and use, but also they could be moved for groundskeeping and things like that. Also, a little more nitty-gritty, they would be six and a half feet wide, eight and a half feet long. And that's about the, that's the recommended size for a fifth and sixth grade soccer, boy soccer, boys and girls soccer players. So, I thought that would be the optimum size for that. That is, yeah, that's, that's my overall project, my idea. And then if there are any questions or concerns, I'd love to hear them.
Just out of curiosity, what's the size of regular goal?
Normal, the size that they, for example, use at the high school and then thereup would be eight feet high and 24 feet across.
Okay. Just curious.
Okay, my question is to Rich and to you, the space that they're talking about, is that feasible?
Oh, I think there's adequate space because I think we're talking between the two playground areas. I think there's plenty of room.
I agree.
You do? Okay.
We've been emailing back and forth, David and I, for a few months now, and he had some other ideas, but I think really this is what our, our school could use, but also a special meaning to David. So, I think it would be, like he said, giving back to our school, which is what we want our students to do.
Is there in the whole class with it?
Yes.
Materials and everything?
Yeah.
There's lots of fundraising.
Wow. Great. Okay, so we need a motion to allow this young man to, okay, motion been made.
I'll second it.
The second? Okay, all, any questions on it? No?
Sounds great to me.
Yes, me too. He saw all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll be in touch. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, any public comments? I love this part.
Yeah, I go.
Go ahead, Mike.
Maybe point at me. I come from here. I'm here to just, we'll update on, as far as EMC versus getting the school certified. I tried sending a couple emails and no responses. I just wonder, I know the last time I was here, you were checking with the board in Bennington to get the final okay.
This is for the American Red Cross you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep, actually, we actually have it on our agenda tonight to sign it. You didn't send me an email because I didn't get any.
Well, I can't even remember the gentleman's name, the one that's been working on it.
Oh, Jim.
Jim.
Jim. Okay.
I sent him a couple emails, he never got back to me. But, well, winter's coming, who knows when we're gonna need it, you know?
Yeah. Well, I think all our questions have been answered as far as the Red Cross is concerned. And I do believe I sent a message to Catherine to have it about our, having her attorney look at it. And I think she said she did, so, or he looked at it, and Rick looked at it.
There's Jim right now, coming in.
Yep.
So, right now, everything's still on the burner and everything is still a go?
It's definitely still a go. Yep. And I think at this point too, when you, last time you were here, you were going to notify some people, if I wasn't, if I'm not, if I'm correct? Because you were gonna bring some people in if, if there was an emergency and we needed to use the school.
Yeah, I'm still, we're gonna, once this gets certified, then they said they'll have a class once we get the people out. That letter's gonna be coming out shortly.
Okay. All right.
Once everything falls into place.
Okay. My only suggestion is that when we do, which we probably will sign it tonight, if you could stay in touch with Mr. Phillips and, and let him know, like, once we sign it, if you, I guess maybe the next step is that you do notify some people that might be helping us?
Yeah.
And then they...
Not though, I'd be dropping off. I was just informed the other day at our last meeting that when I updated my EMC report to state the town, the school's sure to get one, fire department should get one, so that's coming.
Okay.
All it is is work some contact numbers and what's gonna take place if...
We do have those.
Who's in line and their telephone numbers.
Yeah. And I think it's really, really important that we keep that communication open and that everyone knows because that's, that's the important thing. That way that we don't have a mess up and we don't have people standing on Route 7. What do we do? Who's gonna, who's in charge? Where do we go? You know, this is why we're trying to smooth things out.
Yeah.
So, I would appreciate that.
That's why I showed up tonight.
Good.
I know it was on the agenda, I didn't talk to Andy the other day, there.
I haven't, I haven't gendered yet, I'm sorry.
And you know, Mike, anytime you have any questions, you know, give me a call. You know, I'm, I always answer my phone, for me answering them sometimes.
I believe also at the last school board meeting last month, Rick Pembroke had said something about all the schools are Red Cross site and we're one of the ones that haven't signed the agreement yet.
Oh, I don't know.
If you recall that?
Yes, I do recall that.
Okay.
Yes, because I'm up in A and M schools.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Transfers and reassignments, there are none. Okay. Finance and facilities, the front entrance is the valley that is used.
Here I am. When we started our capital projects in June, we decided that we would hold the front entrance because the cost at that time would have put it over the anticipated expenditure. So, I think it's now time to look at what we spent, what money's been allocated, and decide where to go. In June, we anticipated we were gonna spend $61,000. I've gotten with Jim and it looks like so far we've spent $46,000. That being the conference room, the windows, smartboard upgrades, all of those things that were listed in June. So, that leaves us approximately $15,000 left in that 450 account. The proposal I have is, let's do this in segments. In other words, why don't we enclose the east side, which is the side facing the building this year, and then address the front part next year, okay? Which would be the double doors. Because the thing that pushed the cost high was the two double doors in the front were $10,000. So, that, that didn't seem realistic at that time. And then, of course, you're gonna wanna put some kind of swipe device there to get in, which is probably gonna be three or five thousand dollars.
On the front? On the outside?
On the outside. The full intent of the whole thing is to enclose that front area to have a secondary...
But I don't think we were talking about a swipe on the outside.
We weren't talking about a swipe, just so that the parents would have a place to wait out of the cold and under the weather.
Okay.
As long as the front doors...
We've talked a couple different scenarios, right?
We talked about bringing doors on the inside, but the problem is, it becomes an eager ask problem. It's another set of doors that you're gonna have to, someone's gonna have to buzz open. Is that what you're talking out here?
If you enclose the entranceway, we were just gonna put double doors in the front so that they can come in and be out of the weather.
Right.
And the doors that are there now will stay locked like they are with the swipe system.
You don't need a double lock.
We weren't gonna double lock it, we're just gonna keep it so the parents can come in and be out of the weather.
And not stand in the hallway. That was, that was the intention.
Okay.
Was to secure the building.
But that wasn't what the security recommendations were, is to, but that's neither here nor there.
Don't care.
But we, we weren't gonna put an interior door, right? That was all agreed upon. Because initially, we were gonna put, at this junction out here, a double set of doors, right?
No, you mean in the building?
Inside, yeah.
No.
And we agreed that that wasn't gonna happen.
That went to the trash barrel.
Okay. So, you're not concerned about any security on the front part of the...
Well, you're double securing it. I mean, I don't think you need double security.
As long as the door that we walk in right now can be locked?
Yeah.
And it has the swipe and the buzzer system?
It has an intercom.
Yep. And they can't get in until they buzz.
We just didn't want the parents or anybody else standing in the weather and freezing when we need the children.
Which I don't, if you enclose the front, I don't believe will be bad because that's directly over the main heater that heats the gym.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's why the snow melts, that's why there's all that wetness there. I think once you enclose it, it's gonna be acceptable as far as heat-wise.
The parents need less.
Yeah. But you're still gonna have to put some kind of lock device on there or you're gonna have traffic in there or someone's gonna camp out there at some point.
Lock it at the end of the day.
Right, you're gonna have to have some kind of lock device on, on the door. You're not gonna wanna leave it open.
Oh, no, we're gonna keep it locked.
No, you're gonna have to.
At night when there's somebody here.
Right.
As I recall, the doors we've locked now originally weren't gonna be locked. We're gonna go further out.
Right.
And lock the first set of doors. But now that we locked, we got these doors locked.
Right.
The outside don't need to be secured.
Okay.
It's just a, a weather issue.
That saves us $5,000, $3,000 to $5,000.
All right.
So, what I'm proposing is enclosing the east side. It would be a brick, I looked at both the veneer, but it'll be a mortared brick. We will have adequate ventilation, I have, I've been with Jim Seacor on it. So, there'll be a window there and we'll have to put additional lighting in there because we'd probably lose some kind of...
Right.
The walls are gonna be spray foam insulation because you don't wanna put fiberglass out there and have insects or anything. So, we're talking about urethane insulation. The interior at this point, I'm suggesting leave a Duracast, which is the cement board, until we decide how we wanna change the interior of that. You know, you may wanna put wainscoting or something, but at this point, we'll leave it cement board.
Yeah.
Okay?
What's the square footage that we'll be enclosing? What's the square footage we'll be enclosing?
Yeah. Whatever you wanna put in there. I mean...
What is the square footage?
What's the square footage?
You'll end up with?
Oh, the square footage, I don't have that number right, right here exactly.
About the, how many feet by how many feet is?
I'm gonna say it's 18 feet, the length, and then it's, it's 10 feet high, so it's 100, about 180 square feet. I'm suggesting we try to get the work done by November 30th so that, you know, we can keep the weather out of there. And the cost is $6,500.
Okay, so I'm gonna look at Jim and what, what do we have now?
Well, basically, as he said, of the $61,000, we spent 46, so there is 15,000 remaining in that, in what you made a motion to spend. I'm not sure what he's talking about for additional now that you're not gonna put a secure door out there with a lock.
That's $10,000.
$10,000, okay.
So, now you're down to 55? Or it was gonna be 65 plus 10,000?
Right. So, you're 16,000. So, you didn't, you would need more money. I'm suggesting hold off, keep that money in the reserve account, put it back in the reserve account, and just do that one side.
Jim?
It's your pleasure, whether you want to spend additional monies this year or find out if, if the little section without the doors would be sufficient, and then you can find out if you need more protection.
What do you think we should do, just do the east side?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, eventually it should be done.
Yeah.
We certainly don't want the parents, you know, standing out in the freezing cold.
Well, that would block, if he does the east side, that's gonna, that's gonna block a lot of the wind and snow blowing in there and whatnot. So, yeah, my suggestion too would be to do it in steps instead of jumping right into it.
Yeah, I don't have no problem with it.
Gentlemen?
I would think it could be bigger than, I thought it could be, because we're spending the money to fix it up.
What could be bigger?
The whole foyer thing.
Oh, no, I don't wanna do that. We don't wanna go to that expense. You're talking, going out?
No, I don't know, I mean, either way.
No.
Just a roof there now, that's above it.
Just a roof.
Yeah.
So, if we wanna go a foot to the right or eight inches to the right?
I don't, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, because of the windows and the office.
Yeah, yeah, and you have the office and we spent money for security for this, the windows and whatnot.
For windows, we can see out there.
Yeah, I think the space we're talking about right now that's out there is probably, that's what we're talking about enclosing.
Well, the only concern...
Do you stand out there every afternoon?
Yeah, the only concern that I would have would be the construction during the school day to get this done by November 30th.
I don't think that'd be a problem because the mason needs two days to do it, okay? And I, they are willing to start on a Friday and continue through the weekend. I mean, I realize it's a front entrance and we don't want boards and things, plastic hanging. So, I have talked to the contractor, if we do it, we need to do it either during the Thanksgiving break, which is that opportunity, you know? So, I believe that they could at least do it in stages. They could frame up the wall, do the masonry on the outside, and I, I don't see a whole lot of construction going on in the front. I mean, I'll certainly take that into consideration.
That would be extremely important because you, you don't want construction where children are trying to run in and out.
And what with the floor, is it concrete now? Should it stay concrete?
Yes, stay concrete.
Yeah, it's concrete.
You haven't said anything.
I breathe it, just waiting.
Okay, just do the east wall?
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I guess I would, but before we do that, I think there was another problem too, I believe, with the, it's nothing to do with the front. I do remember, remember in the summertime, it gets really hot? And you had said something about we needed a heater, a water heater?
She's talking about a hot water heater in the kitchen.
Yeah. And that's on the next page. Do you wanna finish this and then, I've got other attachments signed here.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, let's have a motion to do page one first.
I make a motion that we go ahead with the masonry on the one wall.
East side?
East side.
East side.
Motion been made, second. Is there any other discussion on it? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand.
I attached on the second page the remainder of the windows. I know everybody thinks that we completed the windows and the doors. We have in the classrooms, but you still have exterior doors that need to be replaced.
Doors, but the windows are done?
Yeah, the windows are done.
Oh.
Yeah.
Scaring me.
There's somewhere around 14 doors, but we still have the gym doors, the one in the kitchen, the entranceway at the stairwell here, the C doors over here. So, there are still doors.
Did we do any doors this summer?
Yeah.
We did. Okay.
So, I kinda laid it out, the remaining doors, and I know it's not a good number, but it's almost $20,000 every year over four years. That's my thoughts on how to get it done. I mean, I'm open to any suggestions, but I just wanted to put it there so that everyone...
The way you've been doing it, I think, has been fine. Every summer, you know, you just replace a couple doors.
Okay.
And we have, we have the money for that.
And the last two pages are, I know we have some new members here, is the five-year plan that I've been working on for 10 years. It's, we continually update it, but this is the most current copy, so everyone can see that. And under, under the energy and efficiency is the hot water. If you remember back, just before we did the exterior cooler, we talked about on-demand hot water in the kitchen. We investigated that and there were some restraints on exhausting the fumes and it didn't seem the propane was the way to go. And at that time, I'd asked how much a commercial hot water heater would be. Because right now, our capacity is based on the demand in the kitchen. The kitchen is our big driving water usage, hot water. Right now, we can't support it, so we have to run the boiler. So, in this time of the year, I started the boiler in September and October, we're not using any heat, but we spend about $1,500, $1,500 to $1,800 a month in non-heating just to heat out water for the kitchen.
$1,500 to $1,800.
$1,500 to $1,800. And we do that for about four months. We do it in September and October, and then again in May and June.
What does it cost for our own separate heater?
When I, when I first inquired about it, it was $10,000 for a commercial hot water heater. That would be enough capacity to cover the kitchen or give us enough to, because we, if you remember right, we replaced the hot water heater in the primary end. So, we, I can support that end, but I can't support this end. Now, the other thing that goes with that, that's also why this building is so hot and because we're running the boiler, that hot water's coming through this building, so you're hot all the time, you know?
Yeah.
So, there are some, there's some savings there. I would figure within two years, you could have a payback. It would pay for itself. I don't know exactly what that...
Is that propane or electric?
With electric, we'd go with electric. You know, now that we've got the generator, before we had the generator, we always thought that we needed propane, but now that we, we can support it with the generator, it only makes sense to go with the generator. Because the propane, the problem is exhausting the air. The one thing we're gonna have a problem with is where do we put it? It only makes sense to put it as close to the kitchen as possible, but I think you're talking about a sizable unit. You know, you're talking probably 300-gallon tank. Because from what I can see, the demand is about 70 gallons. They, they take 70 gallons of hot water all at once when they start the dishwater, just, you know, washing dishes. So, that tells me that you've gotta have some capacity to support that. So, I'm, I'm assuming you're gonna, you're talking about a large, a large area, you know? Initially, we talked about the pantry, but they can't afford to give up the pantry to put the hot water heater in there. So, we'll have to look at that. It may require that maybe we'll have to sneak into the music room a little bit, make a, you know, a closet or something in there to support that, but...
Angie had a question.
Is the generator even working properly?
Yes, there hasn't been any problems. Joel's been taking care of it. We did have one incident with low water.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was just needed antifreeze. No, it's been running well.
Excellent.
Knocking on wood over there, I see.
I saw that too, yeah.
So, I think maybe December I oughta come back and we can look at some of the other items on here and decide what we really wanna do in the summer. Now, the very last item, I think I brought this up, and it's my concern isn't that this back walkway here has a saddleback in it. You know, it settles now that we've got the drainage put in. It could be a safety concern. I think that that should be blacktop soon. Maybe not next year, but soon. It needs to be resurfaced.
When it goes from...
The one that's on the back of the building that leads out to the kitchen.
The stairs to the...
Right. This L, L part of it. So, I just wanna throw that out there and probably some of the teachers can reinforce that, they spend more time out there. But I see it's uneven, I'm concerned it's gonna be a, a safety concern, so...
Well, I, I think...
We've always had drainage problems there. Is that still working?
Yeah, that was my concern.
Or is it being flooded?
It's been, it's helped, it works. What we've got there works, you know, it's probably not ideal, but it takes water. I haven't seen any water coming up to the building. I mean, we still have the fountain at the, the roof drain out there that, I mean, that still bubbles over. But it seems to carry the water. The water seems to be carried away from the building, so I think we've got the drainage. Now, I, I wouldn't think that we would wanna tear up what we've got. I'm think we just wanna top coat what's out there. I know we're trying to take care of that saddleback.
I think we would have to have somebody who does that, look at it, and not second guess because I've seen towns blacktop and then try not to have to tear it up because it didn't work. And I would rather have them do that correctly. Someone that does blacktop.
A quote or something from somebody?
Joe Minshone did the, did the project here on the gym and that's held up real well.
Well, ask him.
Yeah, I think Nathan Martell was part of that too.
Yes.
Yeah.
I might really get a quote. My only two concern is that we wouldn't be doing it now because...
Oh, no, 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 no.
It would be something, we'd have to wait till spring.
No, no, this is all, what I'm saying, this is all part of the five-year plan, it's something we really need to look at and say, okay, let's do it two years from now or whatever.
Now that we're on repairs, I guess this would be a good time for me to bring this up. I have actually gotten three phone calls from parents of young men in this building. There's no water in the bathrooms?
We had to take the Hensree faucets out because they were being vandalized.
But that's not sanitary.
Right now, I've ordered faucet, pressure self-closing faucets. In other words, when you press on them, they close and they're a fixed nozzle. The problem that we have is the Hensree faucets are a high-rise and they're able to take that high-rise and turn it out of the sink area and run the water on the floor. And it started in this bathroom here and then went to that bathroom there, so, and we tried portable sanitizers in there. They dumped them down the sink, they poured them on the floor. So, it's issues that we're addressing with the PBIS team right now.
We initiated a sign-out for the students to use the bathroom so we can kinda track that. You know, they're washing their hands in the classroom, but did you get a timeframe of when we'll get those?
The hand sanitizer that'll go in, the dispenser will be here tomorrow.
What about the faucets?
The faucets are here, the PO hasn't been approved yet. So, they're not giving me the faucets because I can't pay for them. I don't know, no, it's...
I'll check on them tomorrow.
Want to take care of that ASAP?
I'll take care of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, these parents were very upset and I was flabbergasted.
Yeah. Well, I'm surprised that FW Web hasn't given me the faucets. I've never had this problem before. He said, I need a PO. I said, well, it's not, it's not approved yet, you know?
Do they normally have doors on? I heard there's no door either.
We're talking, there's one boys' bathroom downstairs that doesn't have a door that they have a shower curtain on.
Well, I put, I put a shower curtain on.
Okay, I don't, I don't know where it was.
This was the downstairs. And the only, this bathroom upstairs, the upper grade, the lower grade bathrooms, they all have bathrooms within their classroom, sinks to wash. So, it's this upper boys' bathroom up here, but the lower downstairs boys' bathroom didn't have, doesn't have a door, but it has a shower curtain that has a door.
Is there a reason why we don't have a door?
I couldn't get the, these, we had a problem with, that was two years ago, a problem is the boys ripped the doors off. They'd hang on the doors until the hinges broke. So, I, I got heavy-duty continuous hinges on these doors up here, then they broke that one down there, but I can't get the continuous hinge. The vendor that I got it from before doesn't have that. So, I said to Todd, I'll put a shower curtain there until we can resolve how we can get the hinges. Because a lot of the restrooms, there's special equipment, you probably know that, and they're supposed to be vandal, vandal-proof and...
Thank you.
All right, so we're all, we're all set.
Can we back up one step to the hot water heater?
Sure.
I was just looking at the, it looks like for the month, we spent almost $2,000 on the thing.
This month?
So, my question is, do we make hot water all summer because of the feeding program?
No.
No.
Because I don't have a kitchen demand. That's when I use the electric hot water heater.
But this past summer, there's been a feeding program for lunch. They don't use hot water for that?
No. No, they bring the food in.
Yeah, those are brown bags.
It's usually sandwiches.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess the question for, for Jim is, so, two months now, two months in the spring, $2,000, it's like $8,000. Okay. So that, that, I think that's a number that we would save by, by doing this. How much does a hot water tank cost? Does it cost that much?
Yeah.
Well, he said around, around ten thousand probably.
So you said two years. It's like one year, we got it, we got it done.
Yeah, but then again, you gotta subtract whatever your electrical increase is, whatever your power, you know?
For running it.
Yeah, to run, to run it. But I'm sure that you can pay back in two...
Far cheaper than running, and, and not only that, there has been many, many complaints about walking into this building and being so hot. So that would alleviate that too.
Yeah.
I think that's, that'll check off another problem on our list. Good.
When would we like to do that? Like this year?
I'd say soon.
Soon as possible?
The hot water heater?
Well, if we get, if we get it done before March, we start saving money. Because we save money in the, in the early school year and the end of the school year.
We just wanna make sure we have the money. What's more important to do?
First, first he, first he needs to find out where they're gonna put it. That's, that'll be the first one, and then get a price code on it. You know, if you can come back with all that information, we can...
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to get some numbers.
Thank you.
This is our proposal, but there's probably some government money for solar, solar hot water.
Yeah, we don't...
The government shut down right now.
Yeah, you're not gonna get nothing out of the government right now. All right, is it all set? Thank you.
I'm all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. See you in December. Well, I don't know. I'll stay.
His name's on the turnaround. Do you want him to stay?
Your name's on the turnaround?
Yeah.
Why? Yeah, why?
I guess not.
No, I don't feel, that, that would be Joel.
Okay.
You're free to leave.
You're free to leave.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
That was probably a mistake, but it's okay. Okay, part B, VHI member participation agreement and power of attorney. Okay, is that the health?
Yes.
What do the other, um... Yeah, I, I didn't think, I think we talked about this at the SU, were you?
No, it was Monday at the, uh, the presentation.
Oh, it was Monday?
School Board Association.
Well, no, she presented this, but I think we talked about this at the SU, and I didn't think it was going to be... I thought it was gonna be on hold until the SU...
That's correct.
Decided, so I don't know why we have it in front of us.
This is supposed to be on hold.
I, I have, I do not feel comfortable acting on this tonight.
I agree.
Is there a motion to table it, or how do we do that?
Yes, we can make a motion to table it until the, get more information.
Until Supervisor Union advises.
Right.
Second.
A motion been made and seconded to table the VHI issue. Well, I call issue, whatever it is, the participation, the agreement.
Power of attorney.
And considering that we don't, uh, have Catherine here, so it's okay. We'll put that on hold. All right, update on the driveway. Mr. Burrington, you wanna...
Mr. Burrington?
You wanna come down, please?
Come on down.
Come on down, sir. Okay, Angie, you wanna tell them what you had, you had spoke to your dad?
I spoke to Steve Copey, and he was supposed to have them go down and look at it, and I haven't gotten anything back.
So we, we don't know, so I guess this is...
Oh, the turnaround, the...
Turnaround.
Yeah.
Is it done?
No.
No. I drove by last weekend. It's not done.
Nobody did it.
I don't even know if Casey's been down there.
Okay.
Can we do it privately if we want to?
No.
We, we authorized money last time.
No, I know, but...
We have a selectman right here, um...
Mr. Selectman, was that brought up at the meeting the other night?
Casey is supposed to be going down to look at the situation.
And then get back to you when?
Maybe tomorrow night or next night, he comes in or something. Okay, I'll put it, I'm not bringing it up tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Mike, can we just explain to you what, what's going on down there?
No, it's a turnaround on...
It is a turnaround for Joel's bus. It's the only turnaround down there other than having him try to go over the bridge into New York State, which is...
Unsafe.
Unsafe, right?
Mm-hmm.
So prior to, uh, the oil lady's truck used to go in and out, and she never complained. Well, she always let the, the school back the bus up in. Well, they're out of business now, and I, now with us by, by backing the bus up, it's probably making a little dip into it.
Well, we go right around the circle.
Oh, you do go around the circle? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
I drove by the other day, and it's pretty ruddy. I mean, it doesn't like, it take much, some topside.
No.
And for the safety of the children, and no other place to turn that bus around, we had asked.
Basically, it's basically gravel, just moved up.
Right.
Yeah.
And could we get it done ASAP before winter?
Just some holes, a one-ton load, probably, you know, your new one-ton. Load it right up.
Can you take care of that? We don't have to call the chair.
Thank you, Mike.
Actually, while I have your attention, about a week ago, uh, Neemers inspects our buses, and they called me, and they can no longer do them. And, uh, Neemers, and there was another fellow in Manchester that he can't do them anymore either.
Really?
Because of federal law, the inspectors have to have a, a CDL and DOT physical and all that. So I called Bill, and Bill got on it. If you wanna come up and explain what you did?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, this is the, uh, school bus inspection, uh, you know, problem. And as Joel said, uh, he gave me a call because of going to your usual provider, I think Neemers or whatever, and they basically said we can't do it anymore. And, uh, so that said, I'll call the, um, you know, I'll call the commissioner of the Department of Motor Vehicles, who has oversight in this area, and they put me through to the person who is in, um, you know, the head of the school bus inspection area. He basically said there isn't, hasn't been a, a law change. You know, the manual hasn't changed or anything, but what's happened is now that they are insisting upon compliance that there be a road test, which means that to do a road test, you have to have a person who's got a license to drive such a vehicle. And that, uh, a large number of the providers of this inspection service don't have anybody without license, so they can't really do the test.
What, what's the purpose of the road test?
Is to make, well...
They don't get in cars and road test them.
They, they're supposed to, I think, really.
They're supposed to.
They used to.
Okay.
Only in France.
Regardless, you know, I think you can make the argument that it makes sense or it doesn't make sense, but the reality is, is that, that since there's supposed to be a road test, you need to find a different avenue to getting the school buses inspected on their three times a year schedule. Um, so I asked them, well, who is able to do this, and do you have a list? And, and they came back to me, and then they had a number of ideas, and, uh, that, uh, most of them are at a distance from here. Dorset, um, Jackson, that's, that's if I got on here, there's a whole bunch of them. Guilford, Jacksonville, Weston, Perkinsville, all, you know, pretty far away, so therefore, uh, a considerable cost.
Convenient.
But they did suggest, as we kept talking about it, is that, that there may be some options, you know, here in town. And, um, so I spoke to, um, a gentleman I know, Tom Haskins, who works at the, lived in town here, and he used to do this, uh, and he may do it now for the Career Development Center. And, uh, got talking about it, and he was aware of a fellow by the name of Mr. Morris, Chuck Morris, who's here in town. And, uh, he just feel it out, called over him, and Chuck basically said, "Well, this is work that he is, uh, would be equipped to do, and that he has the license, and he has a garage, and Tom would be interested." He doesn't have any place to actually do it, if he was, as part of his business plan. So, um, uh, what I heard back from, um, Tom was that, uh, you know, there's the possibility of calling Mr. Morris, who does truck repair and has licenses in, in town, to see if he wants your business and what the arrangements would be. Uh, and I think that's basically why we're here, to see that that pathway works.
Is he local?
He's in Bennington.
Oh.
And Joel, you know the gentleman?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Morris Repair. He's up off from, he go over the Brooklyn Bridge and around the back here.
Yep, North Branch Street, right, on the other end?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, on the right.
Now, you know, whether or not, and, uh, he wasn't named when I called to the state, so, you know, of course you'd wanna verify they actually can do this and all of those various pieces you get through. And then I think you would want, of course, somebody to, uh, talk to Mr. Morris and say, "Well, what would the deal be?" This is how many buses we have. This is what we're talking about. But I think, uh, he understands that, you know, how, uh, uh, you know, it's very reasonable a school board in terms of figuring out what would make the most sense. I don't think he's prepared to either, uh, charge too much or too little. What that would be is, of course, not my business, but, you know, my goal was to try to find an avenue, considering that your next inspections are coming up fairly soon. That would be a reasonable one for you to explore.
I talked to, not to interrupt you, but I, I did talk to Mr. Morris. And they are certified right now to do trucks, but not buses. So what they're doing is working now that they realize there's gonna be us due for, and there's a couple others, Small and Stegen and Sullivan. He's working on getting its certification. It's a whole different thing from the trucks, I guess. You have to have a different license, and so he has to send somebody up to take the test and go from there. He has a facility. He is willing to do it.
Can he have somebody certified though before our next inspection?
Well, they're trying to do it. I'm gonna call her up, uh, first December.
When's our next inspection due?
December, November, December, and then, uh, February, March.
If worse comes to worst, we go to somebody endorsing it. It's a little inconvenient, but...
There's a lot of gas.
Lot inconvenient.
Yeah, for once, for once.
Three times a year.
It's expensive.
While we're, while we're waiting, waiting on Morris to, to get up and speak.
What I can add is that, uh, while I was on the phone with, uh, the department, I asked them, "Well, if somebody wanted to get a license, uh, how long would it take, and could it be achieved before the next inspection period?" And the answer was, they thought it could, that that could happen. But of course, that depends upon, um, a lot of people and, you know, the things that they need to do. But it's not unreasonable that it, it could well be done by them.
It seems that's awfully strange that we've been doing this right along, and now all of a sudden, somebody has to have a CDL license.
We, they've been battling with that for the last, uh, two years. Bruce and I always had this saying, the paper for the road test, because we had the CDL.
Yeah.
So there was a whole separate paper. We had, every time we brought a bus in, either him or I, whoever brought it in, had to sign this paper that the bus was in good shape.
Especially, I mean, most of our buses are brand-new. They're really fairly new.
Yeah.
And that might be something legislation can look at. I mean, it's common sense.
It's federal, I, is what they told me, not statewide. It's federal, through the federal CDL.
Well, being the last state town in the state of Vermont, you know, it really is frustrating when we have to run so far to get something done.
Everything we do, yes.
Yes, I mean, it's utterly ridiculous personally. That's my own personal feeling, but it's frustrating.
I look at it as, one, here's a business opportunity for somebody in this part of the state, since there are a lot of buses, uh, but they need to get there. I look at it, two, is how do we, I mean, there are two pieces. One is your short-term problem. How do I keep my buses running? And the second one is, is you're talking about what are the policy possibilities that could or could not be changed? And, um, that's worth looking into, too. Federal is, of course, that's different. The state does have some options, I believe, because other states have different inspection, uh, regimens. Some states inspect twice instead of three times. You know, that would be something I would be willing to, uh, if the school board was interested in that.
Oh, absolutely.
However, what I would add, if I were you, I would wanna say, "Is that gonna change my insurance?" Because the insurance company might say, "We're saving you a lot of money because we're doing it three times at a time." I don't know, I'm imagining, but I wouldn't just jump on it. I would basically say that. But if that was something that the school board wanted, may as their rep to, uh, you know, to pursue, you know, what would be, uh, a cost-saving and, uh, maintain safety, which is number one.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, having heard these conversations, that'd be something I'm happy, happy to look at, and I'm sure that this is something that, uh, is also district-wide. So I don't know about the rest of the SVSU and where they would be on school bus inspection, or how that's budgeted or handled. Is it, since we have our own buses, it's a little different here than the rest of it, and maybe you could fill in or let us know, or you.
They, they, they have to go through the same thing, so I mean, it's interesting to know where they're gonna go. They're not gonna drive to Dorset, I can guarantee you that.
So I, just what I'm saying is that as long as it's safe and as long as it doesn't come back on you, because now your insurance premiums are more, or something else I can't think of.
We'll check with, uh, with Rick. And if there's no change in insurance by changing to two times instead of three, then I think that would be a no-brainer. If it does change, I guess I would like to know how much, and if it's pennies, I would probably go for change.
How much is it for an inspection?
Fifty-five a bus, for five buses, three times a year.
Wow.
And is that the price that Mr. Morris was, uh, willing to afford?
No, no, Neemers does. I didn't talk to Morris.
Mr. Morris, that's, that might be a different figure. You see, you never know, because it's now a new contract, so to speak, or a new agreement.
Joel, can you find out and then let us know what, uh, if he's willing to do it and can do it, and how much he would charge?
Yes.
And I think, um, I don't know.
Let's wait till he gets the certification.
That's not something that you'd wanna put your hat on for, would it be?
No, because, I'll tell you what happens. I talked to your dad on that and a couple other people, but if you do that, then I would have to inspect, like, due for's buses and all that.
Oh, you couldn't pick and choose.
Well, yeah, you can't really. And, um, so then I'm gonna have to start carrying the liability. You know, being your employee, I could do it here and be all right, but if I expand it out, and then it would cost me more for insurance. It just wouldn't, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It wouldn't pay. It's a whole different, or things are different now.
We have quite a few hats on now. If you want to add one.
Mike, you have your hand up.
Anybody ever checked with due for?
Bill did, I think.
No, I didn't, I didn't call them or anything. I, I do know that they are in the position of looking around too.
Oh, all right, 'cause they don't do it their own?
Mm-mm. They had Buckley in Manchester, but he's in the same situation, and I think he lost his too.
I mean, of course, those people could go out and get somebody to get, uh, the license so they could road test themselves, but that's, that's private business. They get to make choices as to what kind of business they wanna do.
Thank you very much for going through all that and, uh, doing that for us. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's interesting, if, if I could leave it this way, is that you'll let me know what a little bit you find out, and if you want a bill put in that basically would look into, uh, you know, the pieces around it. And I've, I've heard two now. One is, uh, Joel tells me if he inspected, he'd have to inspect everybody's. But maybe that doesn't have to be so, and the other one is how many times a year, but there may be other propositions, you know, I'm happy to put that bill in with, uh, but I'd like to do it on behalf of the school board, not just because Bill's interested.
Yeah, no, I think that's important, yes, and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, probably why it's a good thing to have somebody else inspect your work.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I miss things, uh, the inspector may miss, you know, something I caught or whatever. It's good to have a couple people doing that.
Costs a dollar or two, it's not a big, it's not a big cost, just for the double check.
They usually, I don't know, Chuck gets an hour ninety bucks or something like that, even if he charged an hour, I think, you know? Which I don't think he would, but...
For a bus?
They have a right to on that. I didn't talk to him on...
It'd be better than driving to Dorset and wasting gas.
We're not going anywhere. We're gonna stay right here. We're part of the state. Did you have something else, Joel?
If you wanted to move up the principal's report about the bus cameras and the paraprofessionals, we could do that while Joel's here.
Sure, is it okay with the board?
Sure.
So the reason why this is on the agenda for this month, I know back in August, you extended the paras to be on for sixty days.
Right.
Didn't know quite if that was sixty school days, sixty calendar days, what that was, so we needed a direction there, of course, but also just to talk about the bus cameras and the paraprofessionals. When I came on last year, this was kind of in the works, and there was a discussion about this, and my view was always to have a combination of both bus cameras and paraprofessionals on the buses, and, you know, I said that back last year, and, you know, I also wanted to state it this year, that I've gone on a couple bus rides, I know how narrow these roads are in Powell and how difficult it can be for just a driver, and I witnessed the paras not just sitting there on the bus, but they are actually up and down as needed, walking the aisle of the buses.
When you were on it?
When I was on there, I mean, yeah, it could be different when someone's not on there.
They do, but even with the cameras, we could, we have a few bugs to work out with the cameras.
With the cameras, yeah, we do, as far as when...
Viewing them.
When the lights go on or when the brake pedal is pressed.
Yeah, there's a panic button, button.
And the cameras on?
If you, if you want to mark, you know, somebody does something, you want to mark it, because you know, it's a three hundred and twenty gig hard drive, it'll hold three, four months worth, so you don't have to keep going back through. It marks the calendar on the day that it happened, and you can go back to that mark and just back up and go from there. Right now, the lights are hooked on to the cameras, which was a good thing, it was, if you get in an accident, you can actually go back and say, "Did that guy," or, you know, if a car runs by it, "Did they have the eight-way flashers on, or did they have the direction light on, did they have the, you know, your foot on the stoplights and stuff like that?" But it's giving us a problem as far as marking the tape or the hard drive.
So whenever you're driving along, you step on the brake, it's marking the hard drive, and you don't need it to be marked?
Right, and we're going to get that corrected.
Is it like you call up the maintenance?
Yeah, we did, yep. We need to get a monitor that, you know, it's just a twenty-five-dollar monitor, but it's something that we can, that they could, that Joel could do, just through a phone call, give him directions on what to do, we get that part cleared up. So if there was an incident on the bus where the driver would press the panic button, that that would just be the only thing marked, and not every time you step on the brake or the lights go on.
So it then goes, it reverts to manual, then?
Well, right now, it, I think it would, it'll still keep track of the lights, but when we bring up a calendar now in the program, it's all red.
From all the brakes?
Well, any, anytime your door opens, anytime you, any light comes out of the direction.
So you're going to tell if there was a real incident or not, is that what you're saying?
You can't, because it's all, every...
Just if the bus driver remembered that, okay, at like eight, eight-thirty, or eight, eight-fifteen, something happened, then I could go back and actually take a look at that timeframe, yes, and take a look at, at what happened.
But we really even had a hard time trying to find that, remember, because there was some discrepancy, you know, you can't remember while...
Will this box, will you alleviate that problem? This additional...
The monitor, the twenty-five-dollar monitor?
No, the monitor is just used to...
Program.
To program it, yeah.
So how are you going to alleviate all the red dots?
By just reprogramming, but it was kind of a glitch, I guess, in the way they programmed...
But we'll get that cleared up, but it's not cleared up currently.
Okay, and it's all under warranty, too, right?
Yeah. So, you know, back to the bus cameras and the paraprofessionals, so we need a little bit more time, I didn't know, you know, that sixty days, to get this part corrected, as well as the board.
I don't have a problem, Cindy, with him coming to us like on a monthly basis and saying, you know, "This is what happened, and we still need the paras," or... Are you, is everybody else okay with that? I mean, I don't want to say sixty days, you're it, you're done.
Right.
No, I, I think when we, actually, because it's a school, I mean, we don't count Saturdays and Sundays.
Right.
No, no.
I think when we said sixty days, it's Monday through Friday.
I think we just picked that so we could have something to go by.
Yeah, it's just a general, a general, it's not set in stone, I mean...
No.
I just wanted to clarify that under my report with Joel here tonight, to kind of see that we could extend that, get that part corrected, and still look at possibly...
Do you think it's helping?
Personally, I, I mean, I do, I mean...
The paras, definitely.
The paras are not the ones that are, they're not pressuring any one of us or anything like that to maintain these positions. The drivers, all four drivers, and, you know, they, they feel like it's an important part of getting the kids safe to school, getting them home. It's another, they're, they're the first person a child sees in their day.
Absolutely.
At their school day, you could start a day off, you know, on, on a high note or, or not, but...
It's, it's a changing world, I mean, it's just way different than...
And the paras, as the students get off every day, you know, they say, you know, "Have a good evening," in the morning, they go over the bus expectations, things like that, it's more personable, and I think that our students actually need to have that.
It's nice, too, if, not to interrupt you, but if we need our spare driver to drive that doesn't drive all the time, you can send that para, you know, will be with him, and she knows the stops and the routes and, or whatever, and it just goes like clockwork and does.
Just a difficult...
That part, I think I totally agree with.
It's a difficult job, our bus drivers have a lot in their hands every day with our little ones, to make sure that they are safe coming to school and, and back home, and the cost of paras, I know that concern the board, but I just wanted that...
Our buses are seventy-seven passenger now, not sixty-two like we used to have.
All of them?
Seventy-one to seventy-seven, I think we have one, actually, the spare's the shorter one, and so is it Lisa's.
And I know that's in the, in the board's hands as far as the paras, but last year, I said a combination of both the cameras and the paras.
And we have one bus that we, we need to have a para?
We do, yeah.
And that's been taken care of outside. So we're actually, we're talking three buses?
Right.
And I had a suggestion, rather than not have them ride at all, is, is just to have them ride at night, if, you know, we really had to lose them altogether.
The afternoons, are they a little more rambunctious?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or quieter in the morning?
If you're looking, you know, to cut cost.
Well, I think that was the idea with the cameras. I think, that's what the board's pleasure is, but I think what we might be able to do, because the cameras are still new, is to leave, leave it status quo, but then to come back and discuss maybe what he had suggested, use them just in the afternoon, because we're really talking three buses, the other one has to have morning and night.
I forget, what's, what's the total amount of repairs on the buses?
There's, there's only one.
The dollars?
Oh, I'm not, I don't, I don't know what the dollars, but we could probably get that, but...
So, I mean, but budgeting is kind of, I mean, it's...
Jim, could you get that for us for our next meeting? We have four paras, a bus run is what, forty-five minutes?
It's by a run, anyway.
They get it.
It's by the run.
So it's four pairs, two runs a day, right? Please, for next meeting?
But you'll have, actually, one, yeah, three, because one...
Three, because one, it has to stay...
One will be reimbursable.
It's reimbursable.
Okay.
Are you, is Todd saying we should keep them or not keep them?
Todd is saying we should keep them.
Okay, I wasn't clear, I was just wanting to hear.
Yeah.
And I've always said to keep them.
And I think we can compromise.
I think so.
I think we can compromise, so if you could get that dollar sign, we'd support.
I think the cameras are a great thing, but I always thought, you know, if there's something going on, the para can stop it, a camera can.
Yeah, exactly.
And I just know from past experience, and phone calls, many, many phone calls, and people stopping me in the supermarket, that they weren't always happy with the paras because they sat behind the bus drivers, and, and I think if you would like to ride the buses all the time, then they would be.
And I have been now and then, and I want to continue to do that.
No, they're, they're all doing a real excellent job, they really are, no kidding around about it, they move, they go where they need, you know, to be, they're doing a really good job.
So, Cindy, last thing, we had a motion for sixty days, can we just change that somehow? So it doesn't expire and something happen?
We don't really need the motion, she just said we were going to come back to...
We're just going to, we're going to come back and talk about it, we're not, we're not going to put a stop to it until we, we decide what we're going to do with them. So in other words, it's just, we leave the status quo.
Then we can review it again, what, next August or something like that?
No.
No, no, well, we just...
Good try.
But the last thing, we had a vote where we would keep them on.
We got a budget coming up, and we have, we have...
But with the new problems of the, of red dots and stuff, we decided that...
We, we need to get the cameras working.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying...
Hundred fifty percent.
Just saying, technically here, we have a motion to keep them on for sixty days, should we amend that motion to make it, to take that off, just indefinitely?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to keep the paras on the bus until further notice.
Second.
All right, motion been made, second, any other discussion on it?
So now they're legal, they're legal for as long as we need them.
Yep.
No, no more? You look like you want to say something.
No.
You don't, okay. All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, put your hands. So that's, we are legally now, this is where we're sitting, okay? And we will, we will go back and talk about it.
I would look at the figures, I don't think it's, it's costing us a lot of money, you know, to do it, really.
Well, like I said, we, we got a budget coming up, and we really, really need to, we need to be careful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
We really appreciate everything you do for us.
Joel, you'll, you'll get back to us on the Mr. Morris?
Yeah.
Issue, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a little bit, because I told her I'd give her some time.
Yeah, okay.
Get somebody licensed.
Okay, thank you.
This is a problem, it's been an ongoing problem, like I said, we've been signing more.
Yeah, I wish we had known about it earlier.
No, he called me last week, he said we can't go anymore.
I wonder what the fine is.
No, 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 no.
Just kidding.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so we had the update on our driveway, we will let the selectmen figure out what they're doing.
I will call Mr. Copey as well.
Okay, double check. All right, we're down to action items, treasurer's report, it's enclosed, were there any questions on the treasurer's report?
No.
None, I'm seeing none. We'll move right to the budget transfers, and we have none, but we are told we have one.
Actually, there was just one situation that came up, there was a purchase of the PA system that was earmarked for last year expenditure. It was ordered in the last fiscal year, unfortunately, because it took so long for them to install it, the invoice did not get presented for payment until after, or this year, but after the time period where we could push anything back to last year. So it is showing up in this year's expenditure report, you'll see one line item that is overspent by about fifty-eight thousand under equipment building, the amount that it would have paid for this, just for last year, rolled over into your fund balance, so that fund balance would just roll over until this year. So what we've done is, we had budgeted ten thousand dollars for retirements this year, there were no retirements this year, and then to enable Todd to have monies in that line item for future expenditure that may come up for building equipment, we have transferred from the retirement line item back into this building equipment, just to offset it. This alleviates any overspending of the total budget anywhere by always covering any over expenditures.
And that covers it?
Yes.
Do you need a motion?
No, no motion, if you want to make a motion, then...
The total was seven...
Well, the, the bill came for, came in at seventy-nine hundred dollars, and the over expenditure on that line item is fifty-eight hundred dollars, so in a sense, Todd, Todd would have another two thousand if he needs to purchase and build...
And the system was installed in September, the training was in September as well, so we have a number of building folks that are trained to use the PA system, it's a great system, we, you know, we're going to be in good shape for the spring musical, as well as any meetings that we would have.
The town meeting, all this?
Oh, my God, absolutely, yay!
Oh, my goodness.
It works pretty good.
Yes, you are going to make...
Everybody swears.
Oh, there's a couple people in this town.
I bet you if they put out a donation box and they fill it.
Yes, good. All right, so let, we'll, do we need a motion for it, probably?
Do a motion to transfer fifty-eight hundred dollars from the retirement expenditure.
So moved.
Okay, motion been made, second, is there any question, any other discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. It's a done deal, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, moving right along, facilities, the Head Start Agreement.
I have one comment on it.
Usually, what's your name, comes, Mrs. Gunn, Betsy Gunn?
She did send an email and ask if she should come, any questions, I emailed her back, and I said, you know, we would welcome your attendance, and...
She didn't go. Then I would say, hold this, because I'm a stickler and...
Can I make one comment before you do?
Yes.
The, the dates are wrong, they just changed the dates, it's, it's, it's twenty-ten to twenty-thirteen, so they should change the dates.
Oh, yeah, it'll go from twenty-thirteen to twenty...
Yeah, I'm saying it's just wrong, I'm just...
Well, you know why, because we never, I don't believe we did one in twenty-ten, was it twenty-ten we did it?
We do it every two years?
I thought it was every three.
Every three years?
Every three years.
This looks like every three.
Every three years?
Twenty-ten to twenty-thirteen.
So it's due twenty-thirteen, you're right, then it would be twenty-thirteen to twenty-sixteen. Okay, I would like to hold this up, and the only reason why, and I would like her to come, because only the technicality is, it's, and I know this sounds petty, but for legalities, the rent is a dollar a year. And last time...
They didn't pay it?
Oh, yes, they did, because they never paid it, but last time we renewed this, I told her to bring me a check for three dollars, because it's only legal, I mean, and, and it's petty, but it's illegal, it's written right here in this document that her and I are going to sign, and if she don't give me the three dollars, then it's not legal, right?
Right.
So I would ask her to come to next month's meeting.
With a three-dollar check.
I, I think that's great, I think that's fantastic.
I could invite her back and mention that to her.
Oh, definitely, tell her to bring a check for three dollars, because that's what, it's a three dol, it's a dollar for payable upon the execution of this lease in advance for the term.
And they're going through a lot of stuff right now, too, they may not be here in three years.
This, just so you know, this was only a draft, so I'm not sure if it was included for you to do any changes or anything like that.
Well, because a draft, it's got the right dates on it, so...
Yeah, we do need to change the dates. We'll put that on our agenda for next month, too. Sounds good, let's see what else can I move forward. Okay, next we have the Red Cross Shelter Agreement. I suppose we could use that. Jim, you've got anything to add to this?
Just that we sign it.
Everybody's had a chance to read it over, any questions on it? And of course, they do know that if school's in session, that it's no, no, they know that, but, okay.
So, once we sign it, then everything that we talked to Mr. George about will start happening, you know, everything, they'll get their classes going, and Red Cross will, I understand, does a fine job. They'll get their classes going and Red Cross, I understand, does a fine job.
Yeah, we, we have no problem, because this isn't, it's a follow-up show. It's a shelter for emergencies. And that's why the town went in halves with us and bought the generator for that purpose.
And Red Cross apparently pays for everything. The one little thing that we never concluded, Todd, is the, where to put the supplies, so that will come up. But once you sign the contract, then it can, you know, there's the site here or there or nowhere. I got a barn, too, so put them there if you want.
And they actually, did they reach somewhere where they pay for the food service and the bestowal service?
Yeah, absolutely.
They do both?
Yep, at straight time, is it?
Okay.
So if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion on this thing? Okay, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, I guess it's passed. Is this the one we signed? You know?
It could be.
I guess.
And there's a couple of initials, too.
Alright. I guess I probably should put power, I want it to be scored. I'll give this one to you. Today is ten sixteen?
Yes.
And then above it is form, you got an initial next to water, gas, electricity. Above, number five, receipt.
Well, does we supply the water, the gas, electricity, and the waste disposal? Is that what that means? Who says what's initially is to be reimbursed, but, oh, to be reimbursed, oh, I like that sign, okay. Thank you. See, Doug, you gotta speak up here, because I'm not an engineer.
So, the original's going to Todd, correct. Please note on the first page, Todd, it says copies, oh, not something else. I'm sorry.
Could you make sure that the board gets a copy? You can always put it in our mailbox and we can.
I have one, I don't have to have a signed one.
Oh, well, I just gave mine up.
Well, can you be sure I get a copy?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so that's another thing off the agenda. Sorry, there's no policies.
Yay.
Okay.
It's postponed.
We've already done the principal's report. Okay, we're down to the chair's report. October seventh is the V S B A.
We do consent.
Oh, yeah, we did, I think you.
And I have one little question.
Okay, what is it?
It's more procedural.
Oh, wait, did we, did we, is there a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
No, I'm making a motion for the consent agenda.
Need a second?
Second.
I'll second if I wanna comment on it.
Yeah, you can, but.
Second, I second.
The law says you have to make a motion and second it, and then you can.
Now you can comment.
Okay, motions been made, seconded. Now, is there any discussion?
Discussion is. School specialty, I just noticed, on all these, all these pound reports, it's great. I love all the details, all little, all little items, three dollars, four dollars, they're all on these. That's great. But for school specialty, it's supply order per cart number so and so. My question is, does Todd see what's in the cart? Or does Jim see what's in the cart? Because it comes to a total of six thousand dollars and this.
Yeah, everything is brought through.
But do you see if it's pencils or, somebody sees that one, okay. Just that everything else on the consents gives you a great, you know, fun detail, all the crazy things you're buying, which are good for the students, I love it. That's all.
That all?
That's all.
Okay. So all in favor, if there's no other discussion, if we're all. Oh, no, you don't. I'm surprised Jim didn't pick that up. Oh, good. At our last meeting, we had an executive session, and the executive session was to ratify the E S P contract. Nicole forgot to get ahold of T M E, so it's not in our minutes. So we want, just wanna make sure it's added to the minutes that the board did ratify the E S P contract.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Now, all those in favor of the consent agenda with the added, they signify by raising your hand. Gonna have this. Okay, take care of that, too. Alright, Jim, do you have anything to report to us? Nothing, this is great. Okay, I do wanna remind everybody that Wednesday, October thirtieth, okay, anybody that can come. Oh, okay, alright, not a problem. I just, and I will contact Nicole.
I'm sure he's gonna be at the.
Yeah, yeah, come on, okay. At five-thirty, at the middle school, there is a meeting, and Jim, what they're gonna do, in between the meeting, we're going to meet, the issue board members will meet briefly, I was told. I have yet to see a brief meeting, but hopefully that will be true.
We have thirty minutes, it's all we have. That's all they give you, is thirty minutes.
Is that what they're giving us?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
For the S V S V issue?
We're eating lunch while you're there.
You're eating lunch while?
Yep.
Okay, that's nice.
I don't figure you have a lunchroom. They didn't say.
So, just a reminder that it is at five-thirty and it's being held at the middle school. And Angie, that's fine, don't worry about it.
If I can make it, I will, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, if you can't, that's understandable. And I'll get ahold of Nicole to remind her to. Okay, enclosed is the S V S U student enrollment for October, and the budget status report is, do you have anything else? Oh, I should have said.
Just the warrants.
Yes, you should have, Howard. Whatever happened to, once we went to computers and paper, we were gonna cut down on paper? Did somebody tell me that? This box doesn't look like we're putting down on paper. And I wanna congratulate our principal. I had three people in the last thirty days give me compliments about you.
Thank you, wow.
I didn't even have to pay.
I get that very often.
It was very nice. I'm very pleased, they're happy. I even went to Belly's Deli to have a simple sandwich and the gentleman came over and said to me, "Kudos to the board." And I said, uh, you know, I get cringe when people, but it was good. So I thought that was excellent. They're very pleased, and I told him, yeah, I thought we did a good job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You are, you are number one on their list.
Thank you.
Ours, too. Okay, is there any other business to come before the board? Did I forget anything?
No, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Alright, did you, did you wanna say anything or you just stayed for our meeting? I think that's wonderful. That's great. And thank you, young man. And if there's anything, you keep us posted if you have any questions, okay?
It's nice to see the whole process of a school board meeting, too, as well, right?
And it's not long dragged out tonight.
Thank you.
You picked a good night.
Yeah. Alright, so if there's no other business coming before the board, we'll entertain a motion for, motion been made, is it second? For Jerry?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second. Thank you very much.